We'll call the council meeting of May 19th to order at 7:00 PM. I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
Council President Briggs.
Here.
Counsel Barrientos.
Here.
Counsel Blaser.
Here.
Counsel Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counsel Schilling.
Here.
Counsel Shane.
Here.
Counsel Spivey.
Here.
Counsel Jantz is excused.
All right, would everyone please join me in standing for the flag salute? Pledge of allegiance, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda tonight is a selection of a council member. I'll turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Slack. So, we do have a vacancy on the council, and according to the council rules of procedure in the city charter, the city has advertised the position on our website and also through the paper and other places, and we've received four applications. Each of those applications and applicants met the requirements to serve on the Dallas City Council and have answered the questions that the council requested as part of their application packets. And so those questions and their answers are included in your packet that you have. Hopefully you've had a chance to read those and review them. So, the process tonight, we will invite the four candidates to come and talk to us for a minimum of, or a maximum of five minutes each. We'll do that one at a time. We'll do it alphabetically, and then by their last name. That's what you want, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll do alphabetically by last name, so we'll start with Kirsten Collins, and then we'll go to Michael Holzapple, and then to Heather Lonsford, and then finally it will be Holly Williamson. While each candidate is speaking, we'll invite the other candidates to join our assistant city manager in another room, so we'll do that. Following each person's five-minute presentation, the council will have an opportunity to then deliberate, if you'd like, and cast your ballots. We'll get to the ballot portion and describe how that process will work after the presentations. So, at this time, we'll invite Kirsten Collins to come to the front and give her a five-minute presentation. We'll invite the other candidates to follow Emily Goner out to the other room. Thank you. So, for a matter of timing, I'm going to use this timer here. Need to program it right. So, what will happen is at three minutes, the green light will come on, and then at four minutes, the yellow light will come on, and five minutes, the red light comes on.
Thank you. Well, good evening, council and mayor, and most importantly, the community members. I do want to start by saying the most important part of these proceedings is our community. Local government should reflect our community, and they should respond to the people we serve. That's our community. My name is Kirsten Collins. I use the pronouns she and her. I care very deeply about Dallas. I care about the future of this city, and I care about the kind of inclusive community that we should be building together. I have previously served as a city councillor. In fact, just 24-ish weeks ago, thousands of voters wanted me to continue in that role. I am asking to be considered to be appointed this evening because I believe that I can continue contributing in a way that centers equity, transparency, and meaningful participation. Our city is full of all kinds of people, people who raise families and run businesses and quietly perform acts of service. But look around. Most of those people are not having a seat at this or any of the tables where decisions are being made, and it's not because they don't care. It's at least partially because they don't see themselves represented here. They don't see someone who looks like them. They don't hear someone who sounds like them. They don't see someone who seems to have a shared life experience. They don't even hear somebody who sounds like an ally. And I'm not here tonight, nor will I ever presume, to speak for someone else. But I did spend four years proving that I can make space for their voices and their perspectives. And when leadership truly reflects diversity of thought, outcomes are strengthened. So Walter Lippman was an American writer, reporter, political commentator for like six decades, and he once said, "When all think alike, no one is actually thinking." Diverse perspectives push us to think more critically and make better decisions, which, of course, leads to better government. This council needs to hear from people whose realities are not reflected in this room. I know that city councillors listen, but sometimes they tend to listen to opinions that are already comfortable, to the voices that are already connected or familiar. And when leaders listen like that, especially if they're listening to somebody that has a platform, or maybe it's filtered through private conversations, leaders lose connection with the broader community. If leaders only listen to what's familiar, what's easy to hear, then they're not building a government that truly serves everyone. And however the council vote goes tonight, it must come with transparency. The community deserves to understand not just what decision was made, but why. What qualities or perspectives or lived experiences led you to appoint the person to this vacant seat? That's the kind of openness that builds trust and shows that this council is making decisions not just because they want to or because they have the right to vote however they want, but because they're actually working for the good of everyone who calls Dallas home. I believe that one of the most important responsibilities of a city councillor is not just casting a vote, but explaining it. Community members deserve to understand how and why decisions are made, not just tonight, but all of the decisions, especially the ones that have impacted their daily lives. And while the law may not require you to explain your vote, transparency builds trust. I, for one, am committed to continued honesty about my reasoning, even when my position is not popular, because people should not have to guess where their elected or appointed officials stand. You do not earn trust through procedure. We earn it by showing up with integrity, listening to all viewpoints, and making sure we're weighing all the choices in front of us. So thank you for deeply considering who to appoint to this vacancy. The community is watching your decision, and they deserve to see that your choice in an appointee reflects the understanding of a need for diverse voices on this council. If I am again to serve as a city councillor, I can promise that I will return with unwavering commitment to serve everyone who lives, works, and plays in this beautiful city of Dallas, Oregon. Thank you.
You, Kirsten. All right. So Michael should be coming in any minute, hopefully in a second. It's like dramatic effect. There he is.
All right, welcome, Michael. So, just to get familiar with the timer, I will start it when you start talking. At three minutes, the green light will come on. At four minutes, the yellow light will come on, and at four and a half minutes, I'll hold up this orange sign. And then at five minutes, your time is over, okay? All right, thank you.
Mayor Slack, council president Briggs, councilors Fitzgerald, Barrientos, Blaser, Jantz, Schilling, Shane, and Spivey, thank you for the opportunity to address you directly. I want to take this opportunity for you to get to know me better so that you might have a better understanding of what brought me to this decision to apply to be appointed to city council. I'm a military veteran who served a total of eight years with the US Army. For those years, I was active duty and served in New Jersey, Virginia, Texas, Holland, Belgium, Germany, and Italy as a traffic management coordinator. After that, I joined the Army National Guard as an infantryman, and did four years of service that included two summers as a member of the Drug Interdiction Program, working mostly in southern Oregon, supporting the Bureau of Land Management. I attended Western Oregon State College, now Western Oregon University, and studied criminal justice, computer science, and business, ultimately earning a bachelor's of science degree with a major in law enforcement and a minor in business. I met my wife, Noreen, went on home from leave. After about two years of a long-distance relationship, we decided to get married. We moved to Dallas in 1996 because we liked what the community offered to a young couple looking to build a family. Dallas provided the perception of a thriving community that had a good balance of industry, commercial business, recreational and residential development that are essential to a thriving and successful community. There were activities that brought the community together and helped to develop the small-town feel that so many of our friends and neighbors have told me is one of the biggest draws that brought them to this town. I started my career with the Polk County Sheriff's Office as a volunteer in the reserve program. I was hired in December of 1994 as a corrections deputy. After seven months, I transferred to the patrol division, where I spent the majority of my 26-year career. I found my niche in investigations. I worked as a member of the Polk Interagency Major Crimes Team, as well as the Polk Interagency Narcotics Team. After being promoted to sergeant, I supervised both of those multi-agency teams. Those experiences exposed me to complex investigations involving everything from homicide, robberies, major assaults, and criminal organizations involved in the manufacturing and trafficking of controlled services in and through Polk County. I was blessed to work with multi-agency task forces throughout the Willamette Valley, and that exposed me to some of the best investigators in the region. I also was exposed to and worked directly with federal partners through the DEA, FBI, and US Marshals. As supervisors, I worked to ensure that the detectives assigned to the teams were provided with the cutting-edge training and resources that they needed to handle any situation that they encountered. One of my goals as to, if appointed to city council, will be to ensure that the departments that provide the services to this community have the resources that they need to continue to provide the level of professional service the members of this community have come to expect. My wife and I had two daughters, and as our girls grew, we got them and ourselves involved in the community through volunteer organizations. I have served in our local church, on church council, in the security team, as a Sunday school teacher, and currently as a small group leader. In the community, I volunteered as a softball coach for many years, as my girls went from T-ball through high school sports. I've participated in the local political process as a committee member for the Public Safety Levy, as well as serving in the election campaigns for sheriffs Wolf and Garten. While my career was fulfilling, it also had its drawbacks. Specifically, I remember sitting in the grandstand of the high school football stadium for my youngest daughter's graduation when I got a phone call. There had been a homicide outside of Independence, and the Major Crimes Team was being activated. I missed my daughter's graduation party because I was needed elsewhere. It wasn't the first life event for me and my family that I had to miss due to obligations I had committed to, but it definitely sticks in my mind as the most mindful. These life experiences over the 30 years that we've lived in Polk County, I believe, make me a good choice to represent the community in city council. I want to be on city council to lend my experience working in government service to maintain the city of Dallas as a place where people choose to live, work, and recreate. There is pride in this community, dragon pride, and I want to see that continue. By properly managing the public services, budget, commercial, and residential development, we can keep Dallas the thriving community that appeals to so many. I've had the opportunity to raise my family in a town that has met all of my expectations and hopes. My desire is to help Dallas achieve its mission of being a welcoming, safe, and livable community dedicated to people and business. Thank you for your time.
You.
All right, so next up will be Tyler Lonsford. So I'm peeking in there. Go ahead and come on in, Tyler. So as you take your seat, Tyler, I'll just get you familiar with the timing system. So you'll have five minutes. At three minutes, I'll start the timer when you start talking. At three minutes, the green light will come on. At four minutes, the yellow light will come on. At four and a half minutes, I'll hold up this orange sign, and at five minutes, your time will be up, okay? All right, thank you.
Start.
All right. Good evening. My name is Tyler Lonsford. I am a proud resident of Dallas and a local primary care provider. I am a product of this community. I attended Oakdale, Lockreal, and graduated from Dallas High School. I went on to Shemekita to complete my nursing prerequisites and graduated from Lynnfield College with my bachelor's in nursing. My professional journey began in long-term care, or as a director of a nursing home. I later transitioned to the hospital system, working first in our oncology floor and then in the operating room. These experiences have shaped my approach to leadership. In the operating room, I strive to build trust, solve problems under pressure, and lead effectively with limited authority and resources. I later earned my masters and became a family nurse practitioner. Today, I am honored to serve as one of the few full-time primary care providers in the county, working directly with families and individuals from all walks of life. Every day, I see the grit, determination, and values that make this community great. I also see the challenges families are up against, particularly those who are working hard but still struggling to get by. If elected to the Dallas City Council, I will be a voice for those families to advocate for thoughtful solutions that empower our community. I was raised here in Dallas, and after college and gaining experience in healthcare, I returned, put down my roots with my own family in my hometown. It means a great deal to me to be near loved ones, contributing to the place who shaped me. Recently, I joined Rotary and have been working to coordinate a food drive in partnership with West Valley Hospital, Rotary, and the Dallas Food Bank. Local efforts like these are critical. With the cutting of programs like the USDA's Food Assistance Program, which previously supplied a significant share of our food bank's resources, we're now facing a local shortfall just as need is rising. When I filled out the council questionnaire, I shared several ideas, many of which emerged from conversations with family, friends, and fellow residents of Dallas. The last question I had the hardest time answering. It is an important question. I feel my answer was a bit of a softball, because obviously Dallas needs a police station. Not only a new one, we need a dedicated police station. I have very few opinions that exist in the black and white. My life experience has taught me that most challenges live in the gray. I try not to be married to hard stances. My views are guided by facts, context, and listening, and I believe strong leadership requires the humility to evolve with new information. I come to this council with no personal agenda. I believe the current council has done commendable work, and I simply want to step in, do my part, and continue the legacy of service. I'm running for city council because I'm passionate about Dallas. I would be honored to serve as a voice for our community, helping to guide and shape the future of this city as it continues to grow. I believe my background in leadership, problem-solving, and community engagement uniquely positions me to help Dallas grow responsibly, thoughtfully, and with an eye towards preserving what makes our town great. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And you, Tyler.
I set the message and sent in Holly. She ended a little early, so I'll have to wait a second. So as you sit down, I'll get you familiar with the timing system. So, this is the timer. You have five minutes to speak. I'll start it when you start talking. When the green light will come on at three minutes, the yellow light at four. I'll hold up this orange sign at four and a half, and at five minutes, the red light will come on, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sounds good. I'm Holly Williamson, as you guys know, and I have definitely enjoyed working on the Budgeting Committee for the last three years. I do love learning and getting to know how the city works together. And also, I've been on Leadership Dallas three years, which is probably not normal. Most people do it one year. But I've enjoyed going back every year because they do different activities, and I've learned just more and more every year, like how the city works together and how we get grants, and being able to hear from a lot of business owners and leaders of the community has been a great learning experience for me. I have also served on a school board for five years, and I run the New to Dallas Meetup Group, which I just plan activities for people who are new to the community to come to. And in that, it's great because I can like help business owners by saying, "Hey, I'm going to plan an event at your business," which, one, brings business to them, and, two, exposes the new people to the different businesses that we have in Dallas, and, three, it allows them to all make friends and get to know each other. So, and I also try to allow the businesses to give me coupons or whatever they want to put in packets to also give out to new people. Because as you may have read, one of the things I would love to see is for the people of the community to utilize the businesses that are here a little bit more. So, I've also done a lot of financial education. I volunteer at the Resource Center to teach budgeting to low-income families. I have a heart to teach others. I've also helped with the city to plan Dallas Days, so that's been fun, just learning the ins and outs of how you get permits and how to plan just big events with the city. So, I've enjoyed that. So I really, overall, I love learning. I love serving in my community. I love teaching my children to serve. They have all helped out with many things in the community, including like the Dallas Leadership Service Projects that they do at the end of the year, and they serve at the Dallas Community Awards Banquet. So, basically, yeah, I love learning, growing, and I know this would be a good opportunity to do that, so if you guys see fit, it would be my honor to serve in this capacity.
So, Emily will come up, and we'll kind of describe the voting procedure. I'm just going to read this out of the council rules of procedure, and I won't read all of it, but we'll get through the first round of voting. So, the voting process says that written ballots shall be prepared, containing the names of all the applicants. The following voting process will be followed. And I don't think the names are, are the names on there? Okay, so the names are on there. So each of the remaining members of the council shall select one applicant and mark their ballot accordingly, and this is the applicant you want to serve on the council. If one applicant receives a minimum of five votes of the remaining members of the council, such applicant shall be appointed to fill the vacant position. So I'll just note for the members of the audience, there's only seven councillors here, but there's eight councillors that are serving on the Dallas City Council right now. And what the city charter says, which is our constitution for the city, it says that the vacancy is filled by a majority of the remaining members of the council. So there's eight members, five is a majority of the eight. So even though there's only seven here, we still have to have five affirmative votes. So if no applicant receives a majority of the votes of all the remaining members of the council on the first ballot, then we'll do a second ballot that will be distributed. And the second ballot shall contain the names of the two applicants receiving the most votes from all of the, from the first ballot, unless there's a tie that resulted from the first ballot. And if there's a tie, we'll talk about what that means. So with that, we can go ahead and do the voting. I'll refer back to the mayor in case the council wants to deliberate before we do the vote.
Any deliberation before we begin voting? Anyone have any comments or questions or anything they want to talk about before we do the voting? David.
Just a very brief comment. We have four really qualified people applying for this opening, which is good, but it's also a challenge because we can only pick one. And no matter how this vote turns out, no matter how many ballots it takes and how it works out, I just want to thank all four of the people who've applied because we've got four quality applicants here, and no matter who we pick, it's going to be a winner.
I would just like to echo that. I think the candidates that we're looking at today are incredibly qualified, and three of them are going to be losers. I would encourage those to continue to stay involved, run at the next election, or keep an eye on any additional openings, because I think we have some good qualified candidates tonight.
Oh. Okay.
So Emily, I think you've already distributed the first ballots to everyone, right?
Yes, you should all have had a ballot at your spot. Please make sure you write your name on it, and then clearly check which one you want, and I'll come around and pick them up.
We announced the vote. We'll announce the name of the councillor and how they voted, so everyone is aware of how the vote took place.
Counsel Blaser cast his vote for Michael Holzapple. Counsel Schilling cast his vote for Michael Holzapple. Counsel Spivey cast his vote for Holly Williamson. Carlos, Counsel Barrientos cast his vote for Michael Holzapple. Counsel Briggs cast his vote for Michael Holzapple. And Counsel Shane cast his vote for Holly Williamson.
So if I read that right, we have five votes for Michael Holzapple and two for Holly Williamson. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So Michael Holzapple received a majority vote of the remaining members of the council at five, so he is appointed to the Dallas City Council. Congratulations. So I just want to, again, express my gratitude to each of the candidates that applied tonight and for the council for the vote. What we'll do at this point is we'll put Michael's name in there, and we had names for everyone tonight, so, and it's good to do that process. So we'll have our city recorder, Kim Herring, swear in Michael, and if, Michael, if you have any family that wants to get up and take pictures or stuff like that, that's fine. You can do that during the process here.
Yes. I might put it out. Definitely.
Why don't you do the swearing in kind of in the middle here, Kim, so that if people want to come up and take photos closer?
Okay, Michael, please raise your raised hand and repeat after me. I state your name to solemnly swear.
I, Michael Holzapple, solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the State of Oregon.
Of the United States and the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dallas.
And the Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dallas.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As city council member.
As city council member.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
So, Holly, huh?
So, we got it.
Right. Counsel Michael. I believe we have some proclamations or recognitions.
We do. So I have one recognition tonight. So, most people don't know this, but today is Celebrate Your Elected Officials Day. It just happens to be on a night of the council, which we love. So on behalf of city staff and as a resident of this city, I'd like to take a moment this evening to publicly express my sincere gratitude for your service, elected officials and those that are appointed to the city of Dallas. Your dedication to our community is evident in the time and effort that each of you contribute to guiding our city forward. In reflecting upon our recent work with the budget and your goals, I was reminded of the breadth of accomplishments we've seen this past year. The commitment you've demonstrated in areas such as infrastructure improvements, economic development, and enhancing public safety does not go unnoticed. I especially appreciate the focus on striving to preserve our small-town character while strategically planning for growth. It's a testament to your long-term commitment to our city's future. I also want to acknowledge that you often face challenging decisions, such as the one that you just made, to appoint a new city councillor, or making adjustments to rates for city services. These are not easy choices, and your willingness to thoughtfully consider the complex issues and strive for the best outcomes for our community is commendable. Additionally, I want to recognize the invaluable contributions of all the volunteers I especially appreciate the focus on striving to preserve our small-town character while strategically planning for growth. It's a testament to your long-term commitment to our city's future. I also want to acknowledge that you often face challenging decisions such as the one that you just made to appoint a new city councillor or making adjustments to rates for city services. These are not easy choices and your willingness to thoughtfully consider the complex issues and strive for the best outcomes for our community is commendable. Additionally, I want to recognize the invaluable contributions of all the volunteers who serve on our boards, commissions, and committees. The members of our boards, commissions, and committees are appointed by you and faithfully serve in their very, in their various capacities. Your leadership in fostering this community engagement is essential to the success of Dallas. Thank you once again for your unwavering commitment to you and leadership. You truly make a difference in the lives of the citizens of Dallas. And Emily has baked for you a cupcake, which is in the box, and we gave you a little gift as well. So thank you for your service.
These are Emily cupcakes?
Those are Emily cupcakes.
All right, any other?
That's all for tonight, Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to public comment. I have something I need to read before we start. For the record, please provide us with your name and whether or not you live inside the city limits. You have up to three minutes. It's your turn to talk and ours to listen. We are responsible, you are responsible for the content, even if it was written by someone else. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Do not direct your comments to individual councillors, staff, members, or the audience. Defamatory or libelous comments will not be accepted. It is expected that you will maintain decorum and respect for each other. A wide variety of viewers watch these proceedings, therefore, we would kindly ask that you refrain from the use of offensive language and name-calling. Distractions take attention from the speaker. This audience, city council members, and city staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by being respectfully quiet. First person I have up is Leanna Dieters.
I think that the council missed an opportunity tonight to have other voices heard. I don't feel heard in our community. I'm sure Councillor Holzapple is wonderful and I do appreciate the things that our council works on and does together, but I feel like one voice, maybe two, are represented here. And that's not enough for Dallas.
Next up, I have Mickey Garrus.
For the record, I live outside of the city limits, but I have business and property in town here. I didn't know that it was Celebrate Your Elected Officials Day before I came up here to say this, but really, I just wanted to come up and, and tell you guys thank you for the job that you guys do, every one of you guys. And it's a hard job and it goes unappreciated very often. And people don't understand the commitment and the hours of work you guys do each week behind the scenes. And I think you need to hear it sometimes because sometimes the noise gets heavy and, and they don't understand everything that you guys do and the dedication that you have to truly trying to serve the community and do what's best for the citizens from a place that is better informed than the majority of the community gets to, to have the knowledge that you guys have. So I just wanted to say thank you. I've been paying attention to Dallas politics for a long time. I've been very involved. And in my personal opinion, I, I feel like the city is in really excellent hands right now. And you guys are doing a good job and you've faced a lot of hurdles and a lot of things that have been out of your control that you guys have dealt with in a professional and appropriate manner, that's fiscally responsible and, and doing the best thing that you guys believe collectively is the right decision for the community collectively. So, thank you.
Next up, I have Ann Heard.
Good evening, Mayor Slack. Last time I was here, I told you we were going to have our annual meeting. It was our seventh annual meeting of the Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center. As a nonprofit, we're required every year to have an annual meeting. And as I correctly predicted, nobody came, but it's okay because we have a lot of contact with the people that are at the pool and that support the pool. At that meeting, I was elected president again. And David Morelli, our treasurer for the last seven years, submitted his resignation and we voted in Jackie Evans. He lives in Independence. He's done lots of finance in his life. He's taken over the treasury, our treasury job, and David is thrilled not to have to do it anymore. And then we have a new member of our board, Alan Hirschmer, and he's from, have you seen him at the pool? Okay, yeah. He's from Monmouth and he's got a lot of great fundraising ideas. One fundraiser we're going to do in the coming months is Moonfall Theater. Every September does, puts on plays on Friday and Saturday nights. And so we have September 20th, and usually we can sell 50 tickets at $20, so it's easy $1,000 for us to make for the Friends of the Dallas Aquatic Center. So we will be selling tickets for that in June. They'll also probably be available at the aquatic center, but it's a lot of fun and you get dessert at intermission. So the only other thing I have to say is all the repairs that we raised money for in 2024 are going to be all completed by June 30th. And we're so thrilled because people gave so much money for those repairs. Last year, we raised $35,277 for repairs for the pool or maintenance for the pool because that's all we spend the money on. So that's my report and thank you very much.
So in the audience, who wants to give public testimony? Do we have anyone on the phone? All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have four things on the consent agenda, the April 2025 financial report, the work session minutes from the 5th, the council minutes from the 5th, and a recommendation for OLCC Limited On-Premises Liquor License for Gather Food Park. Does anyone want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? All right, passes unanimously. All right, reports or comments from the mayor and council members. The council members have anything to report? Yes, Michael? Yeah, I just want to thank each of the candidates that came up before us. I hope you stay involved and apply again, apply for committees. I know you, every one of you will stay involved because I know who you are and I appreciate each of you. Robert?
Echo Councillor Schilling's statements. I truly believe we have some really good candidates. Almost makes you wish there were three seats open. On a side note, kind of fun, we have a theater, a community theater in Dallas called Walk the Path Community Theater. We have a gentleman in town who writes his own plays, produces and directs his own stuff. And my wife and I went to go see him on Friday night. It was a hoot. It was all high school kids that were doing the acting and doing all the stage stuff and it was a lot of fun. So I encourage the councillors, the mayor, and the community to check out Walk the Path Community Theater. It's a fun time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Carlos?
I want to echo the sentiments of the four people who volunteered for the council position. It was an extremely hard choice to make. You're all extremely qualified and I hope you stay active in city government and all the volunteer stuff that, that you do. It's really deeply appreciated and, and really hits my heart too to hear people that are so, so dedicated to Dallas. On a second note, tomorrow is going to be such a pivotal day for the ballots. And I know most people have already gotten their ballots in. I saw a few people that even before this meeting, they were just sneaking to get that ballot in before the, you know, deadline tomorrow. But I can tell you, in 2003, I was a Dallas police officer. I was laid off from state police, 139 of us, and I was hired, someone came knocking on my door to ask if I wanted to come to work for the City of Dallas. And I, I just jumped at the opportunity. The opportunity was great, but on the other side, the flip side, you see dilapidated conditions, you see a small police station. I still can recall from 2003, a lady who's speeding and remember hearing her screeching tires as she's coming to the Dallas police station. And she wanted to report that she's being stalked by a former boyfriend who was still stalking her. This, the interview was conducted in the hallway of City Hall. We had to get into some serious matters, some personal matters, and I just didn't have any other place to conduct the interview. And I just thought that was an injustice to any victim to have to explain what was going on. I hope you really give a serious consideration of voting yes on the Dallas PD Police Station bond.
Carlos? David?
Yeah, I was going to say something else, but I want to echo everything you just said, particularly about the police station. And I, I hear people talk about why do we need a new police station? We don't need a new police station. We need a police station because we've never, ever had one. Right now, not to beat a dead horse, but right now, our police department is, is shoehorned into every nook and cranny and closet and available space spread across two buildings and a basement. Carlos just gave you one example of why that doesn't work. There are many others and I won't bore you with them, but yeah. This isn't, this isn't a luxury. This is something we need and, and I hope you all have thought of it in those terms. The thing I wanted to say was to echo what, what Mike and several of the others have said, which is that this was a very difficult decision, but we had four really qualified people and I do sincerely hope that you all stay involved in the volunteer capacity or some other way because you're all committed to the welfare of the community and you can't have too many people like that. And on a personal note, finally, I did say at the beginning that no matter who we picked, it was going to be a winner and I was right.
All right, we'll move on to reports from the city manager and staff.
Hey, Mayor Slack. So our first presentation tonight is by the Dallas Youth Advisory Council and I'll invite our economic and economic development specialist Tyler Ferrari to come up and introduce our speaker.
Brian, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Really excited tonight to talk, have students here talk about some of the great work that they've been doing as part of the Youth Advisory Council over this past school year. The Youth Advisory Council is comprised of both leadership classes at Dallas High School and we've been meeting with them on a regular basis throughout the school year, learning about what's important to them in the community and identifying one particular thing that they've been passionate about. And today, we're going to invite Sophia, one of the members of that committee, to come up and talk about and advocate for and support the sidewalk projects that are being done in Dallas, near the high school and in other places in the community. And so I'll invite Sophia up to read the letter that she had drafted along with her classmates to the city council as well as the Dallas School Board.
Good afternoon. So I'm just going to read this letter real quick, basically just showing our support and our concerns about sidewalks. So, "Dear Dallas City Council and Dallas School Board, as the leadership classes at Dallas High School and Youth Advisory Council, we are writing this letter to express our concerns about sidewalk safety and our support for the Safe Routes to School program. Our main priority is safety for our peers and community. In this letter, we will introduce ideas based on the problems we have discussed in class as the Youth Advisory Council. Our main concerns are the walkways and the current conditions and the lack of adequate streetlights around town. Lastly, we want to express our support for the traffic signal that is being installed at West Ellendale Avenue and Southwest 11th Street. We would like to highlight the sidewalks, crosswalks, and other safety issues around the city. Some of these issues include location and condition of the sidewalks. For example, on southeast Lockrail Drive and southeast Miller Avenue, we believe it will be very beneficial to add a sidewalk to, in addition to a crosswalk. This new crosswalk would go from north to south in order to make it safer for pedestrians and students traveling from and to Whitworth. A sidewalk that is in an area of our concern is located on Holman in front of the Dallas High School. The sidewalk is being lifted from the tree roots and making it unsafe to travel on. These, there are places in town that are with improper streetlights. One of the major areas that we are aware of is on Northwest Hillcrest Drive and Northwest Brentwood Street. Another example of a dimly lit street is on Orker Drive. Better lighting will be very beneficial to reduce accident and make, make, make the sidewalks more accessible to pedestrians. Lastly, we would like to express our full support for the construction of a traffic signal at the Ellendale Avenue and 11th Street intersection. We believe that it will lower accidents and be much safer for pedestrians and students of Dallas. Thank you for taking your time to read this letter and address our concerns. Sincerely, the Leadership Class and Youth Advisory Council at Dallas High School." Thank you.
So I'll just kind of wrap that topic up by saying that it's been great to have both Allison Roberson and Tyler Ferrari from the city join that leadership class and to have the Youth Advisory Council. That was a directive from the city council to get more engaged in the, in the schools and with our youth and so it's been great to see that happen. We're still trying to solve the mystery of how to get in the middle school. We'll figure that out someday. But right now, it's been great. We've been going on into the high school for the last two years and it's been really fun to see that. So, and it's good to see a product of their work. So thank you, Sophia, for coming in and reading that letter. And just for everyone's benefit in the room, several of the projects that have been identified are things that the city is working on and we're going to see a lot of that stuff happen this summer. So we're very excited about that. That's all on that topic, Mayor. My second topic from city staff is the vacation of Southwest 11th Avenue, right-of-way vacation. And I'll have our city planner, Chase Blue, come up and introduce this topic.
Chase Blue, city planner. So this topic relates to the section of Southwest 11th Avenue located between Cherry Street and Oakdale Avenue. You may recall that back in 2019, the undeveloped right-of-way of Cherry Avenue, which is undeveloped, it's, it's trees. It was dedicated as part of the subdivision plat in 1909 and never actually built. And so in 2019, the city council received a petition from the neighbors to vacate this right-of-way, which is, as you can see, unused, not forming a transportation function for the city. City council agreed that vacating the right-of-way made sense at that time. In the process of actually executing those documents, it was discovered that the city limits actually is not on the side of that right-of-way as was believed, but is actually partway through it. So the part that was inside city limits, that was vacated as the council intended. But the part that was outside of city limits and still under the jurisdiction of the county then was not vacated because the city council did not have authority to vacate that portion of the right-of-way. Subsequent to this, the city limits line has moved as additional land has been annexed into city limits. And so that leaves the portion of the unvacated right-of-way that is now inside city limits and the question of what to do with that. And so staff are approaching city council to see if city council is receptive to initiating a vacation of that unused right-of-way, to revert that to private property, adding it back to the tax rules and facilitating development in that area. And so there are a number of different ways that vacations can happen. One is by petition of the surrounding property owners. That has some red tape attached to it. Another option is for the city council to, of their own volition, say, "Hey, this isn't really serving a public function. Let's go ahead and vacate it." That still has red tape, but a lot less red tape. And so staff are hoping city council is receptive to the idea of initiating a vacation of this undeveloped right-of-way and sort of cleaning up the mistake from 2019. So that's the extent of the- So that's the extent of the PowerPoint presentation I have for you. Certainly happy to answer any questions that you have.
Go ahead, David.
Assuming that we go ahead and do this, which I'm guessing is probably the balance of probability, is this, I assume there that this is going to require change to the zoning map and thus the comprehensive plan?
No. So, right-of-way in and of itself does not affect the zoning map or the comp plan. The underlying right-of-way is zoned as residential low-density. The comprehensive plan underlying that residential area is residential. So even though it's currently a dedicated right-of-way, no actual zoning map change would result. It's just saying it's private property now instead of public right-of-way.
One last piece of red tape?
Yes, one last piece of red tape.
So I would add to that, and Chase, can you go back to the last map you were showing? So, yeah, so right-of-way is not zoned, right? There's no zoning that applies to right-of-way, it's just publicly owned land, and so when...
Technically, the code that we have says that zoning extends to the center line of right-of-way.
Sure. But, yeah, so when it's vacated, the zoning goes back to the adjoining zone that's there, is the point that was being made there. But you'll notice that not all of the right-of-way is in the city limits that's being, it's being asked to be vacated. So still a portion of Southwest 11th, the kind of southwest portion that's still in the county, would not be vacated with this request, but would be subject to a future vacation upon the time that that property annexes into the city, whenever that occurs.
So there'll be at least one more step in the future, unfortunately.
This may be a question you can't answer off the top of your head, but I'm going to ask it anyway, because maybe it is. When the city limits were expanded, why didn't we go all the way to the edge of the right-of-way? If you know.
So that is a good question, and it just wasn't something that was really on our radar as something to do at that time. In retrospect, that might have been the better idea, but...
Then we wouldn't have another little piece still hanging out there.
Yes. And so sometimes you can only think a certain number of steps ahead, and unfortunately, that wasn't something that we thought of at the time.
Fair enough, but I had to ask.
I move to direct the staff to initiate a legislative street vacation for the portion of Southwest 11th Avenue, those located between Cherry Street and Oakdale Avenue.
Second.
Seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, the same? Passes unanimously.
Council further time.
Thank you, Chase.
All right, do we have any other business to bring before the council? Hearing none, we'll adjourn at 7:52 PM.